Good evening, everybody. This is the advertised place and time for the first meeting of January, January 7th, the Riverhead Planning Board. I'd ask you to kindly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, I would just like to, on behalf of the Planning Board and the Planning Department, wish everybody a safe and happy New Year. With that said, we're going to go into our discussion items. The first item is North Fork Developers, Inc. Greg, are you handling that one?
Yes, sir. All right, and for this application, I know we have the Towns Consulting Engineer, Vinnie Guardiello, is on a Zoom call. I believe we have a representative from the applicant, Charles Cuddy, and I believe we have Gary Sherman as well.
Doug Adams.
And Doug Adams.
Don Walker. I'm sorry, nothing.
All right, so where we left off, this is a continued discussion of a major subdivision application which has been submitted. This was reviewed by the Planning Board previously, and there were some recommendations made with regards to providing a recharge basin on the yield map. I did refer the plans to the Towns Consulting Engineer, Vinnie Guardiello. He did prepare a memo dated December 17th, 2020, and at this point in the review of the application, we're looking for basically the applicant to provide adequate stormwater recharge on the parcel. Through the various iterations of the plans, some different versions have shown stormwater to be managed solely within the proposed right-of-way, which the town highway superintendent has stated that he does not want to see. And there's also been iterations of the plans which show a approximately 10,000 square foot drainage area. However, the question of whether or not that 10,000 square foot drainage area to be adequate, we have a memo, as I said, from Vinnie Guardiello, and his recommendations. There are, now there are three existing recharge basins from neighboring subdivisions which all border on that subject parcel. Mr. Guardiello's recommendations is that one of those recharge basins be augmented to be able to serve the runoff from the totality of that subdivision. And now we're just at a question of arriving at the proper yield. We have not approved any yield on this. The map shows 12 lots. The question of whether it's 11 lots with a recharge basin or 12 lots as proposed, it really, this comes down to just engineering and how this subdivision would be built and how they're going to manage their stormwater. So I don't know if Vinnie wants to, you know, detail his memo and the comments that we had, we had spoken about.
I would just like to kind of bring the board up to speed of what was involved prior to the writing of the December 17th memo. Greg, myself, and George Woodson, the Highway Superintendent, met at the site, walked the site, and the Highway Superintendent took us on a little bit of a field trip around the neighborhood, and more or less expressed concern with the volume of water that runs through that area, which I'm somewhat familiar from other applications that I have reviewed. His opinion was that he'd like to see the recharge basin that is located adjacent to Lot 6, expanded, and, and more or less be augmented into the property that would serve both this site and as well as address what he believes is a recharge area that is at capacity at times. So when I, we left off with him, I more or less told him that we would relay that to the Planning Board, and at this point, I think I'd be more than willing, and as well as GEO for this matter, to meet with Young &amp; Young and their representatives and, and discuss how we go about addressing the stormwater management of this site, and how that could be done in a manner that also assists with the stormwater that is collected adjacent to the property.
If Vinnie, are you talking about the town, next to the town recharge basin next to Lot 6? Is that, and that goes to capacity at times?
Yes.
Can we step in, Vice Chairman?
Sure.
I, I think that we have an alternative that maybe is, is very much worthwhile, both for that site and for the adjoining site, but not necessarily at Lot 6. And I think Doug Adams can explain what we propose to do, and we certainly can eliminate the problem with Mr. Woodson. And we think this is worthwhile, but I think Doug can explain to you what we propose to do.
Sure.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, regarding Mr. Guardiello's memo, yeah, we took a look at that, and I wasn't able to really look at this until just recently because the memo and, you know, everything went up to the holidays, so we're just kind of getting back in the swing of the week. But preliminarily, I spent a few hours yesterday on it, and, you know, took a look at that Oakland Drive South recharge basin. I wasn't clear at the time what the issue the Highway Superintendent had with that recharge basin, you know, what, what the, what the problem was, if it was overcapacity or, or what. So the problem with that particular location for me is that it, it's adjacent to a, you know, sort of a natural swell that comes from the north, and kind of comes through this neighbor, you know, all these neighborhoods, and makes its way out to, basically out the doctor's path and, and Norfolk Turnpike down there. And I'd rather not, you know, I don't think it's a real good place to be expanding and coming into our property and partially blocking that swell. At least at this time, I want to walk that swell. I plan to do it next week. But, you know, in, in that vein and in that spirit of using and looking at the other recharge basins, I've looked at combinations of the other recharge basins. There's one on Rabbit Run, and actually another one on Rabbit Run, and Ellen Street, the bigger one, to the north. And, you know, we, we can, I'm sure we can work out some combination of using either a little bit of both or using just the one to the north by augmenting that recharge basin. There's, there's a lot of property that's not being used at that site. There was a fence on the northeast side of that that was kept about 50 or 60 feet away from the property line to, to stay out of that swell, and we could expand the recharge basin on that side by about 15 feet, just on that side, and not do anything else and have adequate storage capacity added to that, still having a decent factor of safety. So, and there's a couple of other ways we could do that too, including coming into our property a little bit. But I don't have any problem with, you know, figuring out some way to deal with our drainage using a recharge basin and conforming, you know, in spirit to the subdivision standards, and also, you know, dealing with any drain fall as opposed to a two-in-train fall, which you normally do with a bleaching pool. So, and I'm certainly open to meeting with Vinnie and GEO and anybody else on that issue. But as far as that particular site goes, I don't believe it's a good place to expand it basically southwest, you know, into that swell area, you know, whether it gets very much activity or not. The day it does would be a bad day for that recharge basin. So unfortunately, it doesn't help solve that problem with that recharge basin. You know, in, in looking at it just from the street, you know, it's, it's highly overgrown. You probably could use a, a good maintenance activity applied to it. That may help. It could be silted up, you know. I don't know if it's empty now, or if it's holding water. Area photographs suggests it's holding water, and that it has some, you know, basically some algae growing on it because of the, in the aerial photographs, but I have not been inside it yet, and maybe that's, that could be part of our, our little site visit, you know, in the future. But we're happy to work something out where we use, you know, there are three recharge basins touching the property, and our acreage contributory is small. It's only, you know, seven acres. We could split that and go a little bit into each, except for this one only because I think we understand now that it's at capacity, but without expanding that one. I wouldn't expand that one, that's for sure.
So you're suggesting that at a future date, you and Vinnie and possibly the Highway Superintendent will look at it and get back to us? Do we hold this as a continued discussion item?
I would, I would propose that, you know, I plan on preparing some plans, you know, short of a preliminary subdivision plat, basically, a preliminary road drainage plan. We'll just do some calculations and present basically a drainage solution, at least for our application, that, you know, utilizes one or part of two of these recharge basins in the next couple of weeks before we even need to make a visit. And I think we could do it probably over a Zoom or a meeting in my office combined with a visit, but I'd like to put something down paper first to make sure that the volume and the calculations work out. But yeah, that, I'm certainly, we're open to working with anybody on this, obviously, and I just wanted to say that we are, you know, our intent here is to, you know, conform as best we can to the subdivision standards and need inch design with a recharge basin augmentation or implementation or integration.
All right. Well, we look forward to you reporting back to the Planning Department and to Vinnie.
I just have one question to Vinnie or to Doug. Are we saying that if we do something with that basin next to Lot number six, that you don't need anything onsite? In other words, you don't need a recharge basin onsite?
No, no, no. What would happen, Joe, is that, that, that basin would be enlarged, and would be enlarged into this parcel.
Okay, so that would become, that would become the drainage for the parcel?
Exactly.
Okay.
So really, at this point, the, the question, because we're trying, we're trying to determine yield at this stage in the review. So the question is, you know, we're, we're not at a sketch map or preliminary plat yet. At this point in the review, they just need to reserve an area that will be adequate, you know, whether it's 20,000 square feet or whatever the amount, whatever the amount to handle that volume of water is. That can just be shown on the map. Now, at the yield map phase, it doesn't have to be shown in the exact location that it's going to be. As Mr. Adams said, if they're going to be augmenting two different recharge basins, it's really just a matter of identifying the amount of land that they would need to set aside to handle that volume of water, understanding that when you get the sketch plan, they may split that square footage to augment two different basins.
Okay. We also need to address the question that Mr. Bergman just talked about, and that is the yield. We believe without question that we have a 12-lot yield, and we think that the drainage that we're going to propose will show that also. But in any event, we wrote a memo, I wrote a memo December 10th, explaining our position on the yield, and we think that either way, whether we're exempt, which I think we are, or even if we've found not to be exempt, that the workforce housing allows us to have at least 12 lots, if not even 13. But it's our position that we're entitled to 12 lots on this particular subdivision. And I think I put that in writing, and hopefully Mr. Bergman can review that and get back to us.
Yeah, I just received your correspondence in my mail today, so I haven't read it. I don't know if you received it. We'll review it for sure.
I mean, again, it comes down to the fundamental question of providing a map that shows whatever the number, whether it's 11 or 12, it shows that number of lots that comply with the dimensional requirements of the RA40 zone while still identifying an area reserved for recharge. If the applicant can identify that and provide a map that demonstrates compliance with all those requirements, we can move forward. But up until this point, you know, they're maintaining they have 12, but right now we haven't even identified the yield. So that, that's the, that's the fundamental question that we're, we're trying to get addressed through this.
Okay, well, we're trying to get past the drainage question, and that's what Mr. Adams is going to address, but we think when he gets to that point, that we have a 12-lot subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, if we, if we see that map, we can, we can discuss that when we see a map.
Well, I think you would need to look at the memo to make sure you understand why we're saying this.
We certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, board members?
If I, Eddie, if I may just interject with two comments.
Sure.
First, I think that it's imperative that the Highway Superintendent be involved when we get to an actual subdivision design. Number two, which we really haven't spoken about, and it's something that, you know, eventually we're going to need to deal with when we start looking at approving sketches, Lots 6, 7, and 8, possibly 9, the middle of the building envelope is about 10 feet below grade of what the existing grade is as shown in what this right-of-way is. So when, you know, that's, I, I know I'm, I'm not getting, I don't mean to get ahead of myself, but I think as we start looking at sketch designs, and, and again, I'm not being critical, you know, that's something of how, that should be of interest to the Planning Board and be of concern to the developer in designing this, and how those lots would be redeveloped.
Yeah. Are the slopes graded in 15%? Do you know, Ben?
Um, if you can hold on, I'll give you a ballpark on it.
Perhaps they could just put the topo on the yield map, and then we could see what it's like.
About 10 on 80. About somewhere in the neighborhood of 12, 13. As I said, I, I think it's important when we talk about, you know, we're talking about drainage, we're talking about the swell, we're talking about impacts, you know, just, it's something that eventually that we should be focusing on as we start looking at sketch plan and preliminary drain, and preliminary subdivision design.
Understood and agreed.
Great.
Anybody else? Thank you, Greg. Next discussion item is Long Island Cauliflower Association Site Plan Application Update.
All right, I believe for this application, I think we have Richard Israel, and I believe, I think Tom Wolpert may be on for, from Young &amp; Young as well. All right, so this is a project update for the Long Island Cauliflower Association Retail Center Project, which is a proposed multi-building, multi-building site proposed at the northwest corner of Mill Road and Old Country Road. The application proposes to develop 42,058 square feet of new retail space proposed across multiple buildings, having sizes of 17,922 square feet, 10,904 square feet, and 13,232 square feet, as well as a 4,935 square foot fast food restaurant with drive-through window and associated queuing lanes, as well as related landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management systems. The Planning Board did classify this site plan application as a Type 1 action pursuant to SEACRA back in December of 2019. We did initiate a coordinated review. We have not received any objections to the Planning Board assuming lead agency, which we did in May of 2020. The applicant, we were holding off a determination of significance until the applicant prepared a traffic impact statement. The applicant did provide that traffic impact statement. It was prepared by Nelson and Pope, and the traffic study was dated October 20, October 2020. And that report analyzed the following intersections: Old Country Road and Mill Road, the signalized intersection at Mill Road and the Riverhead Center, the unsignalized egress point on Mill Road from Riverhead Center, as well as the unsignalized ingress and egress point from the proposed site on Mill Road at the northern end of the project. The traffic impact statement summarized that there would not be any significant adverse traffic impacts in the study area. There would be a slight increase in the number of trip generations. However, the one recommendation that was coming out of that report was that based on the volume of left turns and through trips, meaning heading north on Osborne into the site, that the northbound Mill Road approach will need to be restripped to provide one left turn lane with a 75-foot storage length, one through lane, and one right turn lane. As you can see on page four of the staff report, the, as it exists right now, the traffic is a through lane as well as a right turn lane, so there would need to be some traffic improvements to that intersection, and it would require potential modifications to the signal, including a left turn light. As of right now, the applicant has not modified the site plan drawings to include those recommended changes from the TIS, so they will need to do that. Once we receive those revisions, we will refer them out to the Highway Department, and the Highway Superintendent will get to take a look at that. In terms of issues with the rest of the site, Town Code Section 301-93(c) requires a minimum non-disturbed transitional yard to buffer commercial uses with residential districts. That required buffer needs to be 50 feet in depth. Right now, the site plan currently proposes 17 parking stalls as well as lighting improvements within that required buffer area, which does not comply with the Town Code and would require a variance. I do note that the site plan currently proposes 290 parking stalls onsite, whereas the combination of proposed uses only requires 220. So in other words, this site plan right now proposes 70 additional parking stalls in excess of what's required by Town Code. If the applicant were to eliminate those stalls within that required buffer area, they would be providing 273, which would still be 53 more parking stalls than is required by code. Upon request of the applicant, we can generate a denial letter. However, we would prefer to see the applicant remove that, those non-compliant conditions. As the board is probably aware, there have been several instances throughout the town where we've had large commercial developments that have had negative impacts on neighboring residential properties. We have the Stop and Shop site, which recently the Planning Board had approved the 15-foot sound wall in the back to protect from sound impacts. The Brixmore property on Old Country Road did put up a large sound wall to protect it from the, I believe, the Foxwood community located to the east, and Dick's Sporting Goods also installed a sound wall. So there is precedence for sound attenuation to protect the quality of life for the neighboring residential parcels, and I think that's an important, important thing that's need, that would need to be studied before we can issue a negative declaration pursuant to SEACRA.
We're absolutely going to have to do something about noise abatement. I suggest some kind of wall, just like the other applications have done around town.
In terms of a sewer easement, the site plan does currently propose to connect to the sewer district through a new 30-foot wide utility easement along Lot number nine of the Warsaw Park major subdivision, which is the commercial subdivision located to the west. An owner's endorsement will be required to establish that easement, as well as legal description, and they will need to go through the proper procedures with the sewer district to get that extension.
What about the cross-access, Greg? I see in Lot 10 of Warsaw, the next, there's a, appears to be an easement there that goes to this property? Page 1.
Actually, I, I think that's the proposed sewer easement, I believe, on page one of the site plan.
Yeah, page one, if you look at just north of Lot 10.
Yeah, that, that's actually the proposed utility easement. That is not, that is not a cross-access easement.
Okay, so there's no cross-access proposed?
No.
And the, the landscaping on the west side of the project, I thought we were going to try to go with something that was, didn't need to be watered, rocks or astroturf or...
Well, I mean, that, that's something that the Planning Board can discuss with the applicant. You know, like I said, they have not made any revisions to the plans yet based on previous comments. But I mean, you know, the, the applicant can prepare a design that would be, you know, somewhat zero-scape, require, you know, less intense on the water district.
Trees on your report, they, they remain?
The, the trees on the northern portion of the property? Yes, sir. So those are the, that's the existing row of trees along the northern property boundary, which is shared with the residential community to the north. Those trees are proposed to be retained, and in its current iteration, again, with the non-conforming parking stalls and lighting, they did propose some additional landscaping in that area to kind of bolster it. But yes, those trees in the picture are proposed to remain.
Just had a question on the, on the page one of the, of the site plan. In the restaurant area, you have the buffer area which seems to be behind the restaurant, and as I follow that from the dumpster down, I see a break in the, the planting in, in three places. I'd just like to know what those breaks are for. Do you see those, Tom or Doug?
It looks like, it looks like one of them may be a drainage inlet. Yeah, so it, it looks like the two southern breaks, the one closest to Old Country Road, and then that break farther up, looks like they both have catch basins within those areas. If you look at the grading and drainage plan, sheet number five of 12, there are catch basins that are proposed in that area, so it, it may just have to do with design of the drainage systems.
Okay. The county wants to stay involved, yeah?
What was that?
The county?
We did receive comments from the county.
Not local determination, if they wanted...
Oh, from the, the Planning Commission, yes. I, I did reach out to that. The Planning Commission did respond to our SEACRA request. They had no objection to lead agency, however, they did not clarify local determination pursuant to the municipal law 239 referral. I did reach out to them, and I am expecting a, a letter indicating a local determination, but we will receive that prior to any approvals.
So I think one of the things when you're working with the applicant, Greg, is to make sure some kind of sound abatement is included in the plan. I think that's going to be an important aspect of it.
Does the applicant have any objections to providing... Does the applicant have any objections to providing some sort of sound attenuation for that northern property boundary in addition to removing those, the non-compliant parking stalls?
Good idea.
Richard? So, we're basically, you know, understood your comments. We're trying to create the fifty-foot buffer and seeing if we can either move or eliminate that parking. It may cause us to move a building so that we do have sufficient parking around that northern building, but we were going to take a look at that, and this way that would have stopped us from having to build these, these walls. If you, if you look at the project in general, all the truck traffic is on the west side of the buildings. They're not up against, unlike in Stop &amp; Shop and the other places where they're receiving areas or in the rear of their buildings, which are directly adjacent to residential, you'll see that we have, I want to say it's almost, it's almost a hundred and sixty feet from the property line to the building, and that's not even the side of the building that would receive trucks. So, I don't think we have a noise issue here in reference to what you've seen at other sites that have been a problem within the town, but we have taken into consideration, tried to see if we can leave the fifty-foot buffer so that maybe we don't need to go for a variance, and I think that would be satisfactory and acceptable to all in doing that, and give the quiet enjoyment to the residential as it deserves.
Richard, I'm not sure if a fifty-foot buffer, especially in the wintertime, is going to shield those homes from the constant headlights and, you know, vehicles moving about. I'm just making that point. I wish you'd take a look at it.
So, we will. You also have to remember that I think we were proposing to have a planting line of arborvitae's and the like, which are evergreens, which should at least protect that, and you have to remember that if I remove the parking there, it's probably just going to have an aisle there, which shouldn't really direct headlights towards that area at that time. But, but if you want us to start building walls and stuff, I guess we can consider that. I just don't think it's a, I don't think these walls are so nice. I know we're doing them because we do have close proximity to residential, to those where the fifty-foot buffer doesn't exist, and therefore they're hearing the trucks and everything, you know, at all times in the morning and things like that. So, I, I just don't believe these structures are, are nice, and I, I'm not sure how effective they truly are for general noise. If you're going to hear a truck that's two-hundred feet away, that, that particular retention wall, I don't believe is going to change that. You know, if you hear the traffic on Route 58, your, your sound wall is not going to protect your people from that. But, but we can gladly look at it. Let us come up with a plan, Ed, and, and let's see how we can better address it so that it is a little more decorative and desirable than having these sixteen-foot walls that, you know, block the world.
Okay. We're waiting for you to impress us. We look forward to it.
Okay. We, we hear you.
Thank you, Richard. Board members, anything else?
No.
Greg?
So, we'll wait for, we'll wait for the revisions, obviously showing the restriping within Mill Road, you know, redesign that northern property boundary, and then we can revisit it, and again, we'll see where that comes out with the required vegetative buffers and what kind of screening they can propose in that area.
Great.
Is there any application yet to the ZBA? On any...
No.
We have not, we have not made any application to the ZBA right now. There's no, the only issue we had was that northern buffer, and we're trying to do that. And to be honest with you, we kind of shelved the project for a little while. Tom has been working on it, you know, to meet some of the requirements on this particular report, but the traffic study was the hardest item that we had to get through to make sure, you know, what our needs were and whether it truly worked, and, and if we had to move some entrances to create different stacks and loads. But the, the traffic report seems to be quite evident that we're okay from, you know, and obviously must have been taken into consideration when they did the, the Riverhead project across the street, because it was well-placed where that traffic light is and the stack lanes work and everything else. So, now that we have that, we're going to try to fine-tune the site plan as per the comments that the board has made previously.
I, I'd just like to add that aside from the uncertainty of the effectiveness and the aesthetic value of the sound barrier, we have reviewed the site plan memo prepared by Greg Birdman and do not take any major issue with the rest of the comments. We are, we are in the process of addressing them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank all of you. We're going to move forward. The next discussion item is Old Country Road Diamond Builders, which is currently a church, but it's had quite a few other uses to be turned into a medical office. Greg, you going to update us on that?
Yes, sir. So, we have, this is another application. We, we figured we'd get Mr. Israel, get two birds with one stone on this one. So, this is a site plan application proposing a change of use to an existing building located on, at 244 Old Country Road and Riverhead. The proposed change of use is a, for a ten-thousand fifty-three-square-foot single-story masonry building, which is currently used as a church, they're proposing to convert it to office and medical use. Modifications also proposed to the existing parking and handicap striping configurations, as well as site lighting and the construction of a new dumpster enclosure. A new sanitary system is also proposed to manage sanitary wastewater. The proposed application is considered an unlisted action pursuant to SECR with coordinated review being optional and not recommended. Staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency for the purposes of SECR review and issue a negative declaration, as the proposed reuse of an existing building will not have any significant negative environmental impact, nor will it impair the reasonable and orderly development of the surrounding area. Subject parcel is a one-point-five-three-acre parcel located on the north side of Old Country Road, approximately eleven-hundred feet west of the intersection of Old Country Road and Main Road. Subject property has seventy-five feet of frontage on County Route 58 and extends approximately four-hundred-and-ninety feet north. The property is located within the Business Center Zoning Use District, which permits offices and professional offices as an as-of-right permitted use. Parcel shares a common property boundary to the east with Malvies Equipment Company and shares its western property boundary with Optimum Phone Cable Internet Provider Office. There is one single-family residential lot, which is located directly to the north of the subject parcel. The building, the site was developed in nineteen-seventies, and the building has housed a number of uses, including a dialysis center in the early nineteen-eighties, a bank and mortgage center in the eighties through the nineties, and most recently as a church, with the certificate of occupancy for the church use being issued in 2007. Pursuant to the Town Code's parking schedule, the ten-thousand fifty-three-square-foot building requires a total of sixty-seven parking stalls, based on the parking rate of one stall per hundred-and-fifty square feet for medical office. The site presently improved with a total of sixty-one parking stalls, including four handicap parking stalls. The plan currently proposes two additional parking stalls to be constructed in the northern portion of the site behind the building, and proposes to landbank six additional parking stalls in front of the existing building, as well as to restrike the existing parking to provide seven handicap parking stalls, which would comply with the ten percent handicap requirement prescribed by the Town Code.
Is there handicap access?
There will be handicap access, yes.
There isn't now, though.
There is handicap, there is a ramp on the south side of the building, and I believe there are ramps on the main entrance to the building as well. So, right now, the site plan application does propose to landbank the parking stalls within that, I'll say, that little L-shaped area of the building. Being that they're going to be replacing the sanitary system, as you can see on the site plan, the sanitary system is located right in that area, rather than landbank the stalls and have to revisit this at a later time, staff would recommend that while they're disturbing that area, just construct the parking stalls and the ramps and the curbing and sidewalks, rather than have to revisit this. Would the board agree with that assessment?
Yeah.
In terms of lighting, the site plan application identifies a total of ten new or modified LED pole-mounted lighting fixtures throughout the subject parcel. All the lighting fixtures are proposed at a mounting height of sixteen feet above grade and are proposed color temperature of three-thousand degrees Kelvin, which complies with the exterior lighting of the Town Code. There was one minor detail, though. The site plan fails to identify there are two existing pole-mounted lighting fixtures on the western portion of that property. It's unclear if they're proposing to modify them or just remove them. That's a, just a minor clarification that needs to be shown on the plan. There are four drainage inlets that are located on the eastern portion of the property, which capture onsite stormwater and diverts it along that property in a northerly direction, and the water is actually carried through drainage systems on an easement across the Malviesi property, and it deposits that stormwater into a Suffolk County drainage basin located to the east of Malvies and Popeyes. Being that there's no change to the drainage system, you know, there's no modifications that are proposed, so stormwater management would not be an issue. As I said, they are proposing a new dumpster enclosure in the, behind the building to the north. I do note, however, though, the drainage pipe for that system does go right through where they're proposing that dumpster, so they need to just be careful not to damage that pipe. If that pipe would be damaged, they would need to replace that to ensure that the stormwater would be managed properly. Site plan doesn't currently any propose, does not propose any updates to the existing landscaping. I took just a quick picture of some of the landscaping beds within that site. I don't know if the planning board would like the applicant to revisit the landscaping. It didn't seem too terrible, but at the same time, it could maybe use a little refresh at the discretion of the board.
I, I find Mr. Israel's projects attractive and professional, and I'm sure this one won't be any different.
Yeah, I agree. Add some landscaping.
Add some landscaping?
Yeah, fifty-eight there.
Alright. So, the site plan was referred to the Riverhead Water District for its review and comment. The Water District in a email dated December ninth, they noted that the property is currently served by a one-inch service line. The Water District noted that an RPZ must be installed, as there is no record of one there now, and that if there is an increase in meter size, key money fees will apply. So, the site plan will need to be updated to show the location of an RPZ. Application will require approval from the Suffolk County Health Department for the increase in sanitary flow and for the new sanitary system. Referral of this application to the Suffolk County Planning Commission was not required pursuant to an intermunicipal agreement with the Planning Commission and the town of Riverhead. And then, being that the application does not propose an increase in any floor area and the limited improvements are related to creating additional parking, staff recommends that the approval of this application be handled administratively and recommends the board waive the requirement for a public hearing, and would recommend approval of the application pending satisfaction of any updated landscaping designs, as well as the issues identified in the report.
Board members, any issues? Just have one question for you, Tom. Have you gone to the Health Department yet? Or mute?
Mute yourself.
Have you, have you made application to the Health Department yet?
Yes, Joe, we have a pending application with the Suffolk County Health Department, Office of Wastewater Management, and we are in the process of responding to some comments.
They're not asking to put an IH system in, are they?
No, they are not.
Good.
And we, we do have a resolution up for this meeting to classify the action and issue a negative declaration so that they can move forward with their Health Department application process.
So, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. So, the reason we're asking for, we're not sure what the use of this building will be in the end, whether it will be medical or, or regular office. We've created a site plan which kind of brings everything up-to-date, the lighting, to create the dumpster enclosure and do everything that should be in our, in our town. The six spots that are in front, I consider that to be a very focal point of this building, that it's in that knee, and that's the place that we would really like to decorate well and, and dress up the entrances and stuff to that building, which is in that, that knee. There's a small alcove there, foyer, that leads to there, and we would like to improve, obviously, the handicap access through there and, and stuff. So, that's why I thought it would be nice to landbank those particular spots and upon a need, open them up if we needed. I mean, right now, when you look at those spots, if we were to create them and have a medical use, it basically takes that curb line, the sidewalk behind it, right up to the building in that southwest corner. So, right now, it's a nice green space that exists there, you know? We're, we're hoping to dress it up with landscaping and, and, you know, maybe a place for people, especially now with COVID, where people are waiting outside, place for a bench or, or this or that, and that's what we were kind of hoping for. I do, I do understand that, you know, I, I hopefully will upgrade the septic systems and the like. The current septic systems work for regular offices. They'd have to increase a little bit for medical, and I'm willing to do that improvement. And whether I put back the curb today or not is, is a very little concern to me, but there is a lot of asphalt on this property, and, and because of its configuration, there's, there's, the, the only place for plantings is around the building. The, the property lines are both, you know, pretty much well-vegetated and exist between us and Cablevision, and the back has its buffer to the residential, which we're not looking to disturb. So, the only place that I have to dress up this building is in that knee, and if I don't have to create the parking spaces, it might give us the opportunity to take a building that was built in the, in the sixties and early seventies and at least try to bring it up to a modern-day standard of, of what it should look like and, and the like. And, you know, we're, we're trying to figure that out. We're waiting for our tenants, but, you know, this building will be brought up to, you know, modern-day standards, and part of that is, is the site plan with its lighting and the like. We are going to be removing all of the old lighting and, and the high fixtures that are perimeter, and we're going to make it conform. But I'll leave it up to the board. If you really want me to create those spots in front and create more asphalt, you know, we, we find in a lot of our places, we, we have too much parking based on code, and I, I would just want you to consider of allowing the landbank. We have done it on other projects that we've done in the past, and we've never had to open them up because of uses and things like that. So, just a request, I'll go by whatever you guys determine.
Give it a opinion, Greg?
I would have no objection to that. There is a mechanism in the code that would allow the planning board to, I believe, they have to provide at least two-thirds of the required parking, so there is a mechanism in the code to allow it. Like I said, if Mr. Israel's going to put some landscape in there, snazz it up, make it look nice, I would have no objection, you know, again...
Put on the plan itself, you'll outline where it's going to be.
Oh, yeah, he would have, I mean, it would have to remain, you know, he'd have to identify landbank stalls, and then if he's going to do some landscaping, just provide a quick plan of that, but I would have no objection. I mean, as you said, you know, it's the difference of sixty-one parking stalls versus sixty-seven. It's still within that, so I, I would have no objection to that.
Board members, okay?
Yeah.
Done deal? Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to keep moving forward here. Next is Manor Lane, the discussion of a sub, two houses on one lot and a subdivision of that lot.
We have, Mr. Cuddy is here again with this application. So, the Planning Department has received a minor sub, two-lot minor subdivision application, which is seeking approval to subdivide an existing zero-point-eight-three-acre parcel and create two separate building lots, with Lot One proposed at a size of zero-point-four-seven acres and Lot Two having a size of zero-point-three-five acres. Subject parcel identified as Suffolk County Tax Map 600-68-2-6. As I said, is a zero-point-eight-acre parcel of land located at forty Manor Lane and Jamesport within the Hamlet Residential Zoning Use District. Hamlet Residential Zoning Use District. Property is located on the east side of Manor Lane, approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet north of the intersection of Manor Lane and Main Road. Surrounding area is developed with mixed uses, including a number of single-family residences along Manor Lane, an existing landscaping business and warehouse directly across Manor Lane to the west, as well as the Jamesport Fire District Firehouse on the west side of Manor Lane, and an accessory fire district building located directly to the south of that property. The property is presently improved with a number of lawfully existing structures. The letter of pre-existing use was issued on the site on January nineteenth, two thousand, for a two-story frame, single-family dwelling with enclosed front porch and a covered side entrance, one two-car concrete block garage, one-frame outbuilding, and one-story frame barn with office and one small kennel. So all the structures onsite currently have a valid letter of pre-existing use. One note, though, is that the LPEU references a kennel. It is unclear whether the use of this was for the residence or if it was used commercially. Staff notes that the Building Department has issued a demolition permit, permit number twenty-zero-nine-four-six for the demolition of the existing dog kennels. I did speak with the applicant on this. One of the recommendations is that once that demolition of the kennels is done, that he would ask for the letter of pre-existing use to be amended, to remove any reference to that kennel. That way, there's no potential in the future for trying to establish any sort of commercial use or trying to get that grandfathered in. When I did speak to Mr. Sullivan, he seemed amenable to that. The application will require a number of variances for lot, you know, dimensional variances for lot size, side yard setbacks, and we are just waiting for one additional clarification on the existing impervious coverage. Once we get that impervious coverage, we will draft a denial letter for the applicant and let them go to the zoning board. In terms of recreational fees, the town code does require a three-thousand-dollar recreational fee per lot that's created. However, being that this application does not, will not result in any additional residential development, they're really just essentially splitting a parcel with two valid lots, they would not be subject to the recreational fee. Both structures are currently connected to the Riverhead Water District, extension number thirty-two J. Properties are served by a one-inch water line and then a five-eighths survey, five-eighths inch water line, and they both have their own separate water meters. The title report was reviewed by the Town Attorney's Office. There's a couple of modifications that'll need to be done to the title report before the planning board can approve it. The application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. We are awaiting its recommendations.
How about the Health Department, Greg?
Health Department will be required for this application. I'm not sure what it's going to, you know, require on that end. I do note, however, that there were, when I was looking at old surveys on the property, there is, there was an old survey which identifies the location of all the existing cesspools, as well, and I do note that there also is a cesspool for that, in the vicinity of that kennel system. I recommend that while they're recalculating the impervious coverage, those systems should be shown on the revised survey. I think that would be important for us to know as well.
Both houses are served by separate systems right now?
Correct. Again, they were, these houses existed prior to nineteen sixty-five, before there was any kind of, you know, Health Department requirements for that. Yeah, cesspools.
Yeah, cesspools.
Yep. So we do have a resolution for this meeting to classify it as an unlisted action and issue a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA, as the division of the parcels would not create any additional development, would not have any significant negative environmental impacts. Completing SECRA at this time would allow the applicant to complete their zoning board of appeals application, once they make that, as well as move forward with their Health Department approvals.
Board members, any issues?
Nope.
I visited the other day. It's very neat, the surroundings.
Yep.
Okay, moving right along. Do we have to?
I think, did Mr. Cuddy have any questions on that?
No, that's fine, thank you.
A memo saying that we deny it, waiting the DBA approval?
Well, so I've spoken with Mr. Cuddy. He's aware that we're looking for the impervious coverage calculation, as that is a dimensional requirement of the Hamlet Residential Zoning Use District. Upon submission of that, we'll generate a denial letter right away, get them through that process so that they can move forward.
Great, thanks, Greg. Okay, next one is Os, two-thirty-five Osborne Avenue, discussion of facade renovations of a two-story office building. I think you're up, Greg.
Just for the record, I did speak with the architect of record on this project, Mr. John Kniff. He was unable to attend the meeting today. However, he did get a copy of my staff report, and he had no objections, so he was amenable to putting it on for a discussion. If there's any issues, I will relay them to him. So we've received and reviewed an administrative site plan application proposing facade improvements to an existing two-story office building presently used as an orthodontics office, as well as minor site improvements, including the installation of a new stone paver walkway and ramp, the installation of a new four-foot-tall PVC fence, as well as minor improvements to the existing aprons and curb cuts on Osborne Avenue. Subject parcel identified as Suffolk County Tax Map number six-hundred-one-twenty-eight-two-eighteen is a zero-point-three-one-acre parcel of land located on the west side of Osborne Avenue within the DC-three zoning use district, approximately fifty feet south of the Long Island Railroad tracks. Site is presently improved with a two-story office building, as well as parking stalls, which are located to the west and north of the building. The site presently has two curb cuts on Osborne Avenue, one-way in and a one-way out. Property shares its southern, western, and northern property boundary with the Riverhead Free Library Parking Lot. The existing two-story structure has been in use as an office building since at least nineteen seventy-seven, according to records maintained by the Building Department, and has undergone various additions and renovations through the years. All building permits which were issued on this property have since been issued valid certificates of occupancy. The proposed facade improvements consist of removing all vinyl siding and existing wood siding, and provide new pre-painted hardy-plank lap siding with a seven-inch exposure, remove all aluminum-wrapped fascia and soffits, and replace with smooth PVC trim boards, as well as replace all the window trim with PVC trim boards. Prior to approval, the applicant must identify the color of the proposed hardy plank, as that was a comment from both the ARB as well as planning staff. On page three of the report, you'll see they're proposing to remove the existing dilapidated chain-link fence and replace it with a four-foot-tall PVC fence. Site plan does propose the removal of an existing brick walkway and stairway, and proposes to reconfigure the area with a new paver, walkway, and paver ramp. Site plan does propose new landscaped planting beds in front of the building. However, staff notes that the existing planting bed, which is located directly in front of the building, appears to be in good shape and should be retained rather than replanted. The newly-created planting bed along Osborne Avenue is appropriate to replant in a similar fashion. I do note that there is no handicap-accessible parking, which is currently providing onsite. Town code requires that a minimum of one handicap parking stall be provided onsite. Staff recommends that the applicant restripe and re-sign appropriately the handicap-accessible parking and create a painted crosswalk to connect to the existing ramp on the building. I did speak with the applicant, being that this site had undergone site plan review and had been issued building permits. He had raised the question if he needed to go to the zoning board of appeals for a reduction in parking, being that, like I said, being that it had already been reviewed by town boards previously, and perhaps they just didn't catch it, I didn't see it, find it appropriate to penalize them and send them to the zoning board. It would result, it would result in the elimination of one parking stall to provide that handicap-accessible aisle. The application was reviewed by the Architectural Review Board as the meeting on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. The ARB did recommend preliminary approval, subject to the submission of final color samples. We did receive comments from the Highway Department. The Highway Department would like the northernmost cement apron replaced. As you can see in figure six in the staff report, it is broken, so the, well, Highway Department will look for that to be replaced. And one minor note is that I did note on figure seven, there is a existing speed bump in the access drive aisle, which is just broken, been cracked up, so I would recommend that just for safety purposes, the applicant repair that speed bump. Again, referral of this application to the Planning Commission is not required. Staff recommends that the planning board adopt a resolution classifying it as a type-two action, and once we get color samples and we get an answer on the proposed materials, grant administrative approval. Any issues?
Thank you, did it.
Excellent.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Knightland Inc., the review of a removal of a covenant.
Good evening. This was on your agenda for the meeting that was canceled for the snowstorm. Mr. Barra is, at that time, was selling his property to the Pecanic Land Trust. Mr. Danowski, the attorney, asked that the covenant, going back to an old possible nursery use, be removed at the request of the land trust. So that covenant was in fact removed. The closing has occurred. The land trust wrote a very nice letter thanking the board for putting it on for the last meeting and considering it at that time, but it needed to proceed and be taken care of. The landscape use was never established. It was a site plan that was approved. Covenants were put on the property, and that was the end of it. So there was no vested right in the landscape use. Nobody wanted the landscape use, but it was an impediment of title to the closing. The land trust, when they purchase property, indicate that these types of covenants can affect the agriculture and markets organization's ability to fund certain purchases, because it would appear that there's a use other than agriculture that's permitted on the property, even though this covenant didn't convey that. So you could just adopt that this evening. It'll do the housekeeping and take care of it.
Is this a, is this parcel that they're donating, or selling, is that part of East Wind?
No, I don't believe so.
It's a separate parcel?
Correct. Any other questions?
Don't put a name. Anybody else? Okay. Next discussion item is Cooperage in alterations. Brian?
The Planning Department has received and reviewed a site plan application seeking approval to construct an approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot addition to a six-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-two square-foot, single-story frame restaurant. Proposed actions also include the removal of existing fencing, the installation of a new thirty-three-foot-by-ten-foot walk-in freezer, the installation of a new walkway, and the installation of new PVC fencing. The proposed site plan application is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRA. Coordinated review is optional and not recommended. Staff recommends that the planning board assume lead agency status without coordinated review and issue a negative declaration. The proposed action is consistent in character with the current use of the parcel and does not anticipate it to cause any significant negative environmental impacts. Subject parcel particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map six-hundred-sixty-one-two-one dot one is a one-point-eight-acre parcel located at twenty-two-eighteen Sound Avenue, directly north of the intersection of Tumi Avenue and Sound Avenue. The parcel is within the Residence A-80 zoning use district. The surrounding uses are primarily agricultural in nature. The subject parcel shares its western boundary with a seventy-eight-point-three-acre parcel where Long Island Spirits Distillery operates. The northern and eastern boundaries of the subject parcel are shared with a twenty-three-point-seven acre parcel currently in use as a commercial nursery. There are a number of private residences across Sound Avenue to the south, which are located within the Agricultural Protection Zone Zoning Use District. The site is currently improved with a six-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-two square-foot, single-story frame restaurant, along with associated paving and landscaping improvements. The restaurant use onsite is a pre-existing non-conforming use. The building onsite was issued a letter of pre-existing use on January fifteenth, nineteen ninety-seven. The restaurant and its associated improvements have undergone a number of expansions and updates throughout their history. The most recent application for this parcel, which underwent site plan review, sought to add a seasonal awning, seasonal canopy, flame retardant cooking area canopy, and an emergency generator to the site. This site plan application was approved by Planning Board Resolution number seventy-two on September sixth, two thousand and seven. This approval resolution was later amended by Planning Board Resolution number six on January third, two thousand and eight, to correct the tax map number listed in the resolution. These resolutions approve plans dated July thirty-first, two thousand and seven, prepared by Martin Sanluzy. A site plan application was later made on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine, to replace an existing window with a French door, to add a pervious paver patio, and to add two retractable awnings. This application was deemed a minimis and did not undergo site plan review. The Planning Department has received and reviewed plans dated September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, which include a sheet entitled "Site Plan," labeled SP one, and a sheet entitled "Enclosed Area Work Plan," labeled SP two. The application proposes to construct an approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot addition to the northwestern corner of the existing single-story frame restaurant. The provided plans do not specify the square footage of the proposed addition. It must be revised to include this information. Similarly, the application states that there will be no change in the square footage of the total building area, which is not accurate given the nature of the proposal. The majority of the outdoor area that would be enclosed under this proposal is currently in use, is what the applicant describes as a kitchen prep-covered area. This area is surrounded by a white PVC fence and covered by a flame retardant awning, which is supported by a metal structure. It's a heavy-duty plastic partition that divides the area underneath the awning. The exact nature of the present use of this area is unclear. It should be noted that this kitchen prep-covered area is separate and distinct from the flame retardant cooking area canopy, approved by Planning Board Resolution number six on January third, two thousand and eight, which is on the eastern side of the restaurant. Plans approved by this resolution did indicate the presence of a flame retardant awning near the northwestern corner of the building that is currently described as the area to be enclosed. However, these plans do not indicate that this area would be used as an outdoor extension of the kitchen. A review of recently submitted Building Department applications associated with the subject parcel revealed a building permit application with the same area of work as the current site plan application. This building permit application contained plans dated November eleventh, two thousand and twenty, prepared by Martin Sanluzy. These plans depict similar improvements to those proposed by the current site plan application, but are inconsistencies between the two plans. Of note is the orientation of the proposed walk-in freezer, as well as the addition of a six-foot-by-three-foot sliding service window on the northern wall of the proposed addition. A reconfiguration of the proposed doorways and an additional interior wall are also proposed. The applicant must clarify the intended use of the newly-proposed building area, as plans submitted to the Building Department suggest that the area may be used to provide walk-up food service in addition to being an expansion of the kitchen area. It should be noted that the plans provided with the site plan application have a number of differences from the July thirty-first, two thousand and seven plans, which were approved after the most recent full site plan review. The newly-provided plans show an additional eleven parking stalls throughout the site, the removal of one parking stall, removal of the dumpster enclosure area, the addition of a gravel parking area, and the removal of two Belgian block islands in the parking lot. These changes are consistent with the current conditions onsite. No dumpster enclosure is currently proposed. Additionally submitted plans show a number of storage containers placed beyond the western boundary of the parcel. Plans also indicate, include a rectangular area labeled CLF beyond the eastern boundary of the parcel. The nature of these proposals should be clarified. Appropriate owner's endorsements and potential easements must be provided if any improvements are proposed off parcel. Further information should be provided by the applicant, including a floor plan depicting the existing area of the building, in addition to any newly-proposed plans, I'm sorry, any newly-proposed areas. Any current Health Department approval should also be provided to show the currently-approved seating capacity of the restaurant. Plans must be revised to include parking calculations for the site, and elevations must also be provided. Any relevant details shown on the plans recently submitted to the Building Department should be submitted to the Planning Department. Although the application proposes an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, after a discussion of the application with the town attorney, it was determined that the requirement for a special permit does not apply for this application, as a special permit to expand was previously granted for the use by Town Board Resolution number two-six-eight on March ninth, two thousand and one. This previous granting of a special permit to expand allows a current application to proceed without a new special permit under Town Code Section three oh one dash two-two-two G. Application has been referred to the Town Fire Marshal's Office, the Town Engineering Department, the Town Attorney's Office, and the Town Highway Department. Review from these departments is forthcoming. The application will be scheduled for review before the Town Architectural Review Board, once appropriate elevations and material samples are received. once appropriate elevations and material samples are received.
Is there a proposed increase in seating or no?
Um, the application doesn't clarify what the newly proposed area would be used for. It appears that it would be used as a kitchen, but again, um, it may be used.
Okay, so essentially it looks like we're still waiting for more information from the applicant?
Yes.
Brian, I have a question. Both the, uh, the aerial photograph as well as the site plan. On the northwest part of the property, away from the building, there seems to be an area, I don't know what it is. It's fenced off, but it looks like it might be a building. Or a storage area or something of that nature. If you look at your figure one, you'll see that it looks like a dirt area or something up there. On the east, on the east.
On the northeastern part?
Yeah, right.
Uh, that, that area, uh, based on a site visit, it appears is currently in use as a, as a parking area.
Oh, so?
There's gravel, I believe, distributed throughout the area, and, um, people are currently parking there. Yes.
Is it striped or not?
Um, no, that area is not striped. Uh, I have the, uh, previous mylar here.
Oh, 'cause the site plan seems to show fencing all around it.
Can you take a look at the site plan?
Did the applicant receive a copy of your comments, Brian?
I don't believe they've received a copy of the staff report. However, I did have a discussion with Arthur Rast. Uh, yes, I do see what you're saying there. It does appear that there may be, um, fencing proposed there. However, I don't believe that fencing currently exists in that area.
Oh, okay.
However, the applicant, um, could clarify. With a representative.
Yeah, just ask him what's going on over there.
Okay.
Oh, oh, Marty?
Marty, are you on there?
Yes, yes, I'm on. And also Jonathan, uh, and Perkins is on with Arthur Rast.
Okay.
Uh, Jonathan is the owner. He'd like to, uh, um, just, you know, speak first before I, I, uh, add anything.
Sure.
You guys can unmute. Arthur?
Welcome. Hi, everybody. I just want, I, the question you were gonna ask me is in reference to a fence.
I believe, um, Joe was curious about the, uh...
On the eastern boundary, northeastern boundary, there's, there seems to be, on the site plan that we've received, that we have, it shows fencing around an area, uh, which, when I look at the aerial, looks like it's vacant.
That's just gravel. It's an employee parking area, and we put up a, uh, a post and rail fence just for decorative purposes. It's very low.
Okay.
It's strictly for employee parking. It's gravel.
Okay.
And it's, it's noted that way.
All right, thanks. That's all I wanna know.
Thank you.
What is the purpose of enclosing this area? What is it gonna be used for?
It's an, it would be an existing prep area. We, it, prep, right, currently, right now, it's, used as a prep area. It has two walk-in boxes in it, some equipment, and obviously in the winter, it's not heated. It's, the, the existing awning really is an eyesore, and it needs an upgrade. The kitchen does need more prep area to accommodate our different business and business model going forward. Since COVID, we've switched our business model. We're doing a lot more takeout now. We're, uh, we're doing a lot more pot pie sales. And I just wanna be able to expand the, the prep area in the kitchen to accommodate, uh, this with, have a sliding, you know, walk-up window so we can actually, uh, sell our products out of the window when they walk, or they can purchase the items, walk up to the kitchen area and actually purchase instead of coming inside. So I might add, I'm sorry, this has always been an impervious surface, okay, from day one. We had it covered with an awning for the gator, for the garbage and that, and, um, we just felt the need at this point, um, to expand the kitchen to, because our, the whole, I mean, since COVID, everything's changed with our business model. We do a lot more takeout to go now with the pot pie sales, and we don't have enough room, um, to do this. And this is an area that, in the summertime, is fine, but obviously in the winter, you know, there's no heat in there, and it's just a, you know, a temporary structure. We wanna make it a permanent structure with heat, and, um, it has nothing to do with seating. It has nothing to do with additional flow. There's one hand sink going in there, and it's ba- basically just a prep area with, uh, two, a couple outdoor shams, which are electric ovens, you know, and we are putting exhaust in.
If I could just add to that, a couple of items, and that is the, um, as Jonathan had said, this does not, uh, include any change of the use in terms of the restaurant, in terms of seating or parking. Uh, it's, which the parking calculation is based on. So the existing parking, the existing use of the restaurant will not change at all. It's strictly for the prep area. Uh, the prep area in question is, um, uh, the same footage as the current area that is enclosed. However, we have reconfigured it, because in doing it as a permanent enclosure, we've improved the layout and the flow for Jonathan in that area. And, uh, the reason that some of the changes are there, as, as, uh, Brian had mentioned, that there was a couple of discrepancies with the, the plan's been adva- uh, revol- uh, revol- re- being revised a few times, evolving, uh, based on, for example, like the walk-up, uh, takeout window for, you know, COVID-related and whatnot. That's not a takeout, like a walk-up, you know, whatever. That's people call in. Instead of having to go into the restaurant, go to the bar to get a bag, to pay to walk out, they could do it right there. So we redid, reconfigured a few things. Those would all be coordinated into the final document after this meeting for approval. So we, you know, we're ready to finish that up. We just wanted to get, you know, through this meeting and get any additional comments the board may have, so we can mitigate them in the final, uh, drawing that we resubmit right away after this meeting.
Sounds to me like you're trying to adjust your business plan to accommodate the rough times in the, uh, restaurant business these days.
Absolutely. That is true, Eddie.
So you need to get ahold of, uh, Ryan. He's got some concerns. I don't know if Marty heard me.
I didn't. I'm sorry.
Okay, he's, Brian's got a staff report. I guess you need to get ahold of that and, uh...
Yes.
Make your adjustments.
Okay. And, uh, one question that we did have is that I, when I first looked at the agenda, which, which we printed out, the agenda has, you know, listed as, you know, a site plan application. We were of the impression that this was gonna be more of an administrative review, because there was no increase in floor area. It's listed as an addition on the, on the agenda, but it's really a reconstruction. So we would like the board to consider it more as an administrative review and an expedited application, so that, uh, due to the fact that the nature of it is not, really not an expansion. It's more of a, uh, uh, reconfiguration of, of a area that's currently used. It does include some changes on the site, uh, in terms of moving a fence and moving a sidewalk for access uh, based on the new configuration, but it's, uh, we really don't consider it to be a, truly an expansion of the facility.
Well, can we do that?
Do you meet the criteria?
Something that's put together with, uh, you know, with cardboard and, and, and drapes, and now we're making it a permanent structure with a permanent roof. Can we do that?
The area to be enclosed.
Je- Jeff shaking his head, yes.
Yes, it is a site plan, because you aren't going, but basically, it had, you know, an outdoor, uh, tent to now are permanently, you know, attachment to the building, so it is a site plan application. Um, however, given the nature of the application, it's worth discretion whether you wanna consider this, uh, administrative. Would I need a public hearing on this?
I don't, I don't see what benefit that would serve anybody.
Well, if we can help them out, I'd like to. If it meets the criteria of the code, I'm, I'm okay with it.
So I think we're still waiting for our comments back from other departments we hear?
Okay, so once we hear back from them, we'll get back on the agenda. If they're not substantive, then we can move forward with our approval. We just gotta wait to hear back from the other departments.
Did you understand the answer, Ted? Can you hear that?
Marty, I think you know the fire marshal's a little backed up right now. Exactly, and if we could get the, um, once we get that information, we'll turn it around right away and get it to you as a final, uh, site plan that we hope would be able to be expedited administratively, and then, uh, Jonathan could, you know, move on with his permit.
Yep, absolutely. It's a simple one.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments, Jonah? Nope. Okay, let's keep moving ahead. Uh, number eight discussion item, Mr. Wagner Residence, Chapter 219 application for coastal erosion hazard line permit applications.
The Planning Department has received and reviewed a Chapter 219 Coastal Erosion Hazard Line Permit Application seeking approval to perform improvements relating to the reinforcement of the bluff, as well as to construct a beach access stairway at 5792 Sound Avenue in Riverhead. Proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRA. Coordinated review is optional and not recommended. Staff recommends the Planning Board assume lead agency status and i- issue a negative declaration as the application proposes to repair, reinforce, and prevent future damage to the bluff. And there are no foreseeable negative environmental impacts from the proposed improvements. Subject parcel particularly identified Suffolk County Tax Map 600-2-2-3.6 is a 4.735 acre parcel located at 5792 Sound Avenue within the Residence A80 zoning use district. The site is located approximately 3,500 feet north of Sound Avenue along the Long Island Sound, accessed by a private driveway off of Dune Drive. Figure one shows the subject parcel outlined in red. The site is presently improved with a two-story frame house with an attached garage, a detached frame garage, and a frame shed. There's a partially paved driveway leading from the southern boundary of the parcel to the two-story frame house. Majority of the lot is relatively flat, with the exception of bluff and beach areas. A New York State DEC permit was issued for the property on August 14th, 2000, for the construction of a beach access stairway and for bluff plantings. Bluff vegetation was planted pursuant to this permit. However, the stairway was never constructed. Presently, the previously installed vegetative stabilization of the bluff has mostly been compromised as a result of erosion at the toe of the bluff. There are a number of sprinkler heads connected by what appears to be standard polyethylene sprink- sprinkler pipe over the face of the bluff. These sprinkler heads and piping appear to have been draped over the face of the bluff to irrigate the previously installed vegetative plantings. The applicant proposes to perform improvements relating to the reinforcement of the bluff, as well as to construct a beach access stairway. In regard to bluff reinforcement, the applicant is proposing the construction of a rock revetment at the toe of the slope, the installation of terraced vegetative plantings across the face of the slope, and the construction of a tapered grass berm landward over the top of the bluff. The application proposes approximately 250 linear feet of rock revetment and would be constructed with a maximum size of 1.55 tons per linear foot. This revetment would be backfilled with 37 cubic yards of clean fill from an upland source. Across the face of the slope, Cape American Beechgrass plantings are proposed. These would be secured by a temporary wood terracing consisting of untreated southern yellow pine planks along with untreated pine or Douglas fir stakes. The proposed berm landward of the top of the bluff would be six feet wide, one foot tall, and would be grassed. In regard to the beach access stairway, the proposed stairway would be located near the western boundary of the subject parcel, would have a width of four feet, would include three landings, and would terminate with removable three-foot by 12-foot aluminum stairs below the lowest landing. The proposed erosion control improvements are permitted under Town Code Section 219-14B1, which allows for minor alterations of a bluff done in accordance with conditions stated in a coastal erosion management permit issued for new construction, modification, or restoration of an, of an erosion protection structure. The proposed stairway and its associated improvements are permitted under Town Code 219-14B3, which would allow for new construction, modification, or restoration of walkways or stairways when done in accordance with conditions of a coastal erosion management permit. In a memo dated December 2nd, 2020, the town's consulting engineer provided comments, but took no projection, uh, took no objection to the proposed improvements. However, he did note, um, that the typical stair section detail on Sheet 5 of the provided plans lacks a lateral support beam under the stair stringers. And he also noted that the stairway design specifies pressure-treated timbers and lumber, and that the type of treatment should be specified and deemed acceptable, uh, acceptable by the Planning Department. Uh, the applicant did provide, uh, revised plans dated, uh, December 15th, which address these two concerns. The application requires and has received a title wetlands permit from the, the New York State DEC pursuant to Article 25, valid August 5th, 2020 through August 5th, 2025, uh, with following conditions. They, uh, allow for the construction of a 250 linear foot rock revetment with, uh, at a maximum size of 1.55 tons per linear foot, along with the other proposed improvements, as shown on the attached plans, um, dated August 5th, 2020. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation also provided a letter to the applicant strongly recommending that no tree-cutting activities be conducted at the project site between the dates of March 1st and November 30th of each calendar year in order to prevent a possible incidental take of the northern long-eared bat that may be present on the subject par- property.
Thank you, Brian.
I do have an approval resolution drafted and, uh, scheduled on this agenda.
One question. Uh, does this project in any way inhibit the public's ability to use the beach?
Uh, it wouldn't appear to me that it would affect that in any way. This, uh, this property is located, um, near the Iron Pier Beach, but, um, a decent ways down the beach, so... And the only proposed, uh, improvements that would, uh, be anywhere near the beach area would be the rock revetment at the toe of the slope and the, uh, temporary stairs, as mentioned in my, uh, report.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have Dennis Cole in the, uh, the Zoom call. He's, uh, representative of the applicant, if there's any further questions that the board may have.
Nope. Anybody?
If there's any questions?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay, um, we have no scheduled public hearings tonight, so we're gonna move right into public comments on resolutions. What's that? Oh, okay. Easy one. Okay. We're gonna move right, there's no comments on resolutions? Uh, nobody waiting?
There are people in there, yes.
Okay, for, on resolutions?
I don't know whether to tell them if they want to.
Okay, if there's anybody that has comments on resolutions on tonight's agenda, uh, you can open up your screen now.
Unmute.
Unmute yourself if you're making comment on resolutions. I don't think we have any takers. Okay, up. Nope. Falls along. Okay, um, I'm gonna move, move resolution number 01 of 2021 for Nightland Inc., so moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Resolution 002, Mary Ellen Real Estate, resolution granting a final site plan approval with condition for a final site plan application, opposing a demolition existing building used as an office for truck sales, as wa- as well as other existing improvements, and construct a new 31,000 square foot stormwater management systems and other related improvements on a 170,000 square foot of land located at 1716 Old Country Road.
I have one question before we vote. I'll s- Greg? This application's been here for quite a while. I'm trying to recall whether there is a private well. There's gonna be a well on property for last year.
Uh, there is a well proposed at the northern end of the property, um, and at the last Planning Board meeting, I believe it was the first one in December. The applicant did clarify that that well was intended to feed all of the landscaping on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the resident- Okay, the resolution's been moved and seconded. Can we have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
I'll move resolution number three, classifying lead agency and issuing negative declaration for the site plan of two forty-four Old Country Road.
Second. Resolution's been moved and seconded. May I have a vote, please?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye.
I'll move resolution uh zero zero four for twenty twenty-one, widening Residence Chapter two nineteen, granting Chapter two nineteen coastal erosion hazard line permit. So move.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. May I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Number five, Forty Manor Roads LLC Resolution classify minus subdivision application seeking approval of subdivide an existing point eight three one acre parcel located at Forty Manor Lane, James Court. And that's it.
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. May I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. That brings us to the end of resolutions. At this point, anybody that's holding for public comments on all matters can open your screen now. Anybody waiting can come in now if we have any comments on any matters before the planning board. All right, I guess we have no takers.
I'll move our, I'll move the minutes of December third.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. May I have a vote, please?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. Any other business concerning the planning board?
Not bad.
Okay, the next meeting is gonna be Thursday, January twenty-first, afternoon meeting at three o'clock. Uh, thank you, everybody. Happy New Year and thank you staff for a good job. Have a good night.